Good evening. Before we call the regularly scheduled council meeting to order, I understand we have a proclamation and a presentation. And Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. If, no sign of disrespect, but can I turn maybe and face the audience?
Please do.
Here we have a proclamation for Brian, who's retired battalion chief for the city of Homewood. So, I'd like to read, he's been here 22 years, so it's a long proclamation. The real truth is, is he's done an awful lot for the city of Homewood. So, Brian, proclamation reads, "Whereas Brian Bonner dedicated over 22 years to a career in firefighting in our community and has now retired, and whereas Brian Bonner joined the Homewood Fire Department as a firefighter and paramedic and advanced apparatus operator to lieutenant and lastly, battalion chief, and whereas Brian Bonner set a new standard for personal and professional development by achieving an associate degree in fire science, a bachelor of science degree, a master's degree in public and private management, and completed the executive fire officer training from the National Fire Academy. He also received certification in a multitude of specialty and technical courses such as, but not limited to, fire suppression, technical rescue, emergency medical services, hazardous material mitigation, and disaster operations. And whereas Brian Bonner served in many capacities as a representative of the Homewood Fire Department in service-related agencies outside of the Fire Department, which included Central Alabama Fire Chiefs Association, Alabama Association of Fire Chiefs, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, Birmingham Regional Emergency Medical Services System, State and Local Emergency Management Agency, Alabama Fire College, other city departments, and many other state and local fire departments. The capacities in which he served for these outside agencies included association president, board member, liaison, instructor, mentor, advisor, and sometimes student. All of this resulted in a positive impact, either directly or indirectly, to the quality of the fire and rescue service provided to the citizens of Homewood. And whereas Brian Bonner's professional and organizational skills, as well as his leadership abilities, has led directly to establishing and maintaining Homewood Fire Department as a model department for the delivery of fire and emergency rescue services. Now therefore, I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, and on behalf of all of our citizens, hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Battalion Chief Brian Bonner for his distinguished service to this city and highly commending for the manner in which he carried out his duties and responsibilities. Brian, we love you. We're going to miss you. And thank you so much for your service to this community and for leaving your family and coming and protecting ours. But you've done an awful lot for this city. And we miss you personally, and we certainly miss you professionally. So, congratulations. Okay, good. And Chief Presnan also has a presentation to make as well, as he gets it opened.
Hi, Chief. Quickly, I will, I will tell you all that when Chief Bonner left and retired, he, he did not want a lot of fanfare. He didn't want a retirement party. He was, he just wanted to move on to his next adventure. It left me without the opportunity to say what, I guess tonight is more about me having the opportunity to say what I'm about to say than him wanting the fanfare associated with having worked a illustrious career here at Homewood. But what I'd like to say initially is that I've had the pleasure, I've been in the fire service for a long time now. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of people in the fire service all over the state, southeast United States. There is not a finer individual that has ever worked in the fire service than Chief Bonner. So, it was my pleasure to have worked with him and served with him for the time he was here in Homewood, and I wanted the opportunity to publicly say that I think he is one of the finest individuals to have ever worked in the fire service. With that, we have a presentation that I'd like to present to him that says, "Brian C. Bonner, paramedic slash battalion chief, in appreciation of your dedication to the fire service with over 22 years of devoted service to the Homewood Fire Department and the citizens of Homewood, Alabama. May you find contentment of a job well done, January 1, 1993 through December 31, 2016." And this is the presentation that we're making.
If you want to show her your wife and take some pictures there right quick. I'll hold one of the others if you want, and she can get a picture of that.
If I could just say too, that if I could give an honorary CPA, I would give it to Brian Bonner because he could have made an excellent CPA as well.
Anything I'll just say to thank you for sharing Brian with us for all of those things tonight.
If you only ask me, let me get a couple of pictures.
Okay.
Y'all bear with us.
We will. No, no, no.
Thank you all. And thank you, Brian.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Mr. Limbaugh, he would like to say something.
I'll be brief. First of all, thank you, Mayor, for recognition, and thank you, Chief, for those words. I'm, you know, I appreciate the recognition. I don't really deserve it. I don't feel like I do. This was certainly my honor, my privilege to have served here in Homewood. It'll always be a special place to me. I don't live in Homewood, but it's always been where I served, and I've always enjoyed it. And I always loved the people, not only that lived here, but you all, the people I worked with, firefighters, police officers, the city council, everybody I've always worked with has been very professional, and I've really appreciated the hospitality. And I humbly appreciate the recognition tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Okay. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will begin with an invocation from Pastor Nick Seaborn with the Raleigh Avenue Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Legions. Please stand with me.
Let us pray. Father, we do give thanks for this day that you've given us. We do thank you for Homewood. Father, we thank you for putting us here, that we would be your people in this place. Father, we thank you for this city council and the way that they serve us. We thank you for our mayor and the way that he serves us. Father, we pray that you would endow them with wisdom and guidance and strength as they continue to serve us, to represent us, and that they would do that well as unto you. Father, we pray that you would be with this meeting, that it would be honoring to you. Help us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you so, so much. And we will now have roll call, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney.
Present.
Mr. Thames.
Present.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
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 And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a quorum. Next item is the reading of the minutes from the council meeting of April 10, 2017. Chair would welcome a motion for dispenses of the reading and approving of said minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right. Next is board vacancies. We actually have two Board of Education nominations. We'll start with the Ward One.
Yes, sir. Ward One would like to move to nominate Justin Russell to the school board.
All right. So, we have a motion from Mr. Thames.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gualtney. Any further discussion or questions? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And if you will let Mr. Russell know that he is unanimously chosen, and I would appreciate that. All right. We also have a Ward Three Board of Education nomination.
Yes, the Ward Three would like to nominate Aaron Stevenson for the school board.
All right. So, we have that nomination from Mr. McCluskey, and then we have a second from Mr. Jones. All right. Any further discussion or question? If there is none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
I'm about to abstain as well.
Okay. So, that will pass eight to zero with two abstentions. And I would appreciate it if y'all will let all the affected parties know. Also, we've got a Ward One Historical. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Mr. Gualtney.
We would like to appoint Callan Childs to Ward One Historical Preservation Commission.
Sir.
All right. So, we have a motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Thames. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Next, we need to, my understanding is, we need to close Ward Five's Homewood Environmental Commission and also Ward Five's Cable Commission. Am I correct?
Yes.
Ward Five folks? Good. Let's make that happen. Are there any other appointments tonight that I don't have written down? I guess that means no. Are there any others that you're aware we need to open, Ms. Salter?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. I'm remembering something. It's okay. All right. Let me modify the agenda, and we will move on. We actually have, oh, you're going to have to help me add, cut that back home. All right. We have one, two, three, four items to add to the committee referral agenda, and one to renumber. And that will be, number one is 250417, request for consideration of 18th Street revitalization project requested by Brett Thames, and this will be assigned to planning and development. Item 270417, request for consideration of a franchise agreement with Mobileite. Did I say that right, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
LLC for permission to install a utility pole in the city right of way, requested by Rick Friere, F.R.I.E.R., Melody Salter, our city clerk, Greg Cowherd, our BEZ department. Assigned to finance, Mr. Jones. All right. 280417, request for consideration of a fiber-optic franchise agreement with Southern Light LLC for permission to work in the city right of way. This would be requested by our city attorney, Melody Salter, our city clerk. Again, assigned to finance. And next, let's see, what would be the new number, 2904? Or have I got that wrong?
We just need to renumber 180417.
I'm going to do that one, but before we do that, what would be the next number that's unassigned? While she's looking at that, and I'll tell you in a minute.
Mr. Limbaugh, can I make one correction? The Southern Light, they should deal with their assignment, their interest, their selling of the company, and it's not a new franchise. They have a franchise.
I see.
It's a transfer under a franchise agreement. The council has to give consent to it.
So, it would be request for consideration of a, of a transfer of a fiber-optic franchise agreement. Good. Thank you.
Yes, it would be 290417.
Okay. 290417 would be recommendation for, what is this?
For program manager for Board of Education.
Okay. There you go. Program manager for the Board of Education requested by?
I'll request it and then send it to finance.
Good. Thank you. And that's 290417. Finally, we need to renumber what was 180417 under committee referral to 260417. Okay. That one under committee referral.
Yes, sir. The one that's going to be renumbered is under committee referral. The real 1804 is under other new business.
Okay. Good. But we have it renumbered to 260417. And to my knowledge, that's all the changes. Do we have a motion for approval?
One quick, did you make the change to the property, the public?
No, I did not.
Okay. So, yeah.
But I was going to change that when we got to it, but 05.
Yeah. I'd say 050417. We need to change that public hearing to May the 8th, as it was published and as it's been reported.
Yes. We'll, we will do that.
That would be the other modification I would make.
No, April 24th was not enough time, so, so, May 8th is, 2017 is the proper time. That is all the changes. The chair would welcome a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. McCluskey is first. Mr. Thames is second. If there are no other conversations, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. All right. Now, we'll move on to the agenda very quickly. The consent agenda, chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Now, we will move to old business agenda, and we're going to take an item, at least one, out of order, so y'all bear with me with the jumping around. First, we will do 320716, public hearing for tonight at 6:00 PM to consider economic development incentives for Wildwood South Development, requested by Mayor McBrayer and Bill Oldacre, who is here. And we're going to begin by opening this for public comments. So, who goes first? Councilman, I would have been disappointed if it wasn't you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council President Limbaugh, to Mayor McBrayer, and to all the council members that are present here today. It's truly a pleasure to be at your meeting. I will say this for the public. I wish we had meetings in the evening also, the city of Birmingham, but unfortunately, we meet in the mornings. And, but it's truly a pleasure to be here and supported this public hearing item as it relates to Oldacre McDonald and redevelopment of the Wildwood Shopping Center. As you all know, historically, for many years, and I was watching the battalion chief receive his honor today, and I thought back to 1993, back in the days of Wildwood Shopping Center, when it was a very, a good retail center with a lot of amenities for constituents in both the city of Birmingham and both Homewood. The days of Bob Bumhauer Wings and a movie theater. The days where we had great shopping and retail in the Lakeshore Corridor. And here we are back almost 20-plus years later to consider an opportunity to revitalize that area. As you are aware, we are contiguous as municipalities, and with both municipalities in that area, will be a great amenity to all in the city of Homewood and the city of Birmingham. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Oldacre is here today. The city of Birmingham did formulate an agreement to help support the redevelopment of Wildwood. We did make an investment from the city of Birmingham, but also worked cooperatively within that agreement to make sure timeframe was felt, actually meant for the development of the Wildwood Retail Center. And as you see, there's a lot of work that's going on now that's going to be beneficial for the area. You know, we hopefully today, through this public hearing, and Mayor, thank you for presenting it, it will get the same support from the city of Homewood. And I'll say this, I think, you know, the stories need to be told, Mr. President, to the council, that cities in our region work together for the better good of our citizens. There are a lot of times out there that we don't realize that the city of Birmingham and the city of Homewood both work together within law enforcement, with, within emergency services, within economic development projects, road improvements, which we see happening right now along Lakeshore, which is the old highway 149. I think those stories need to be told. And I think for that, the reason for that is that everybody knows that we cooperate as municipalities. Unlike the city of Birmingham council meetings, I don't see a lot of media here today. I wish they were here covering that. I think we've got the Homewood Star sitting back there taking down some notes, but they need to let folks know that the largest municipality, along with the city of Homewood, we work all the time together. I've talked to your mayor on numerous occasions. I've talked to your council president, love to talk to each and every one of you to make sure that they keep, you know, this region growing and these two cities working collectively for the betterment of all. So, Wildwood is a great asset. It's a great crown jewel for the citizens in the community, and hopefully today, with your vote of confidence, we can move forward with the agreement. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor. God bless. Thank you.
Councilman Roberson, we appreciate that. Thank you. And, and you being a Homewood-grown person is always important to you.
I am Homewood grown.
Who else? Please come forward.
Nobody else will step up?
No. Tag, you're it.
I'm Bill Oldacre, and I appreciate this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to be here tonight. I will, and I appreciate Jay, what you said, and I will say that when I first, we first got Wildwood under contract, we called, we were driving down, my partner, Mark McDonald and I, we're driving down. We called Scott, and we called Jay, and Jay met us at the, at the Starbucks across, straight from the shopping center. And we said, "We appreciate you taking time out of your day to meet us so quickly." And he said, "You have made my day. You've made my day." And so, that has been the attitude that people have had, and that's the exact same attitude that Scott had when we met and with JJ. And I've been to their office many times, meeting on this. But everybody has been, it's been, you know, when we first, when we first contracted, I went back to the office and said, "Okay, we've got half in Birmingham, half in Homewood. That is a recipe for disaster." You know, it just takes long. But it's been very, very cooperative and from both cities, so it's been great. I will say that Jay used the word crown jewel and things like that to describe Wildwood. I remember the day when, I remember back in the glory days of Wildwood, in the early 90s when it was built. And I was a young developer at the time, a long time ago, and I would, I'm from Prattville, and I live in Nashville, so I'd drive up and down I-65 all the time, and I'd stop at that Chick-fil-A. And I saw that center at its heights, and then I just saw it progressively go down. I kept going to Chick-fil-A every time, so I was always in that neighborhood. And so, then, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, when I heard that it had gone back to the lender, it was a, we were just immediately on top of the situation because we knew that it was a, as I said before about it, it's a diamond in the rough. It has got, it's got great traffic. It's got great visibility, especially now that we've kind of thinning out some of the re-landscaping and stuff. It's got great proximity to some great neighborhoods, and there's no reason the thing cannot be successful. But, but at the same time, it has been through a long dry spell, and retailers, it's a very small world in the retail world. I mean, it doesn't matter where you're from. You know, if you say Wildwood, you know you have a little bit of damaged merchandise. So, we have had, that's why we said, you know, we can't, this is going to be a lot of pulling going on here to kind of pull this thing off. We're going to need some help because it's not as simple as just going to Main and Main and being at an A-plus location. So, anyway, that's the kind of the history of it. I think that you guys are familiar with the agreement, what we are, and you can also see the work that we've already started out there. We are proposing to share upside on sales tax generation. And I was telling Randall, he and I went to the Alabama A-Day game on Saturday with his two and four-year-old sons. And I, and I said, you know, this, this agreement with the city, both of the cities of Homewood and Birmingham are like that A-Day game. There are no lose proposition. This is 100% an upside, sharing of upside. So, we are here to put our effort, our knowledge, our money forward to make something good happen, and look forward to working with you guys as we turn Wildwood around. And also, it's from a technical standpoint, to the document, I want to get Randall Minor up with Maynard Cooper, just to talk about one little minor tweak point. Thank you.
No problem. Mr. Minor, go ahead and identify yourself.
Randall Minor, Maynard Cooper, 223 Devon Drive, also a Homewood resident. As Bill said, he's been working hard to identify the right mix of tenants. There have been a couple of things in recent days that have happened that we'd like to make one modification to the, the agreement that was before you guys. And literally, we just were discussing it a couple minutes before this meeting started. And Attorney Kendrick, I can send you an email just to document this, but it's in section 4.012D. It's just the start date. The, the way we had that drafted initially, it said that shall commence on the earlier to occur of, the validation date basically, or the date on which the developer sends a notice to the city that the first, that the tenant is done, that the development is done. Given some of the movement that's happened in recent days, Mr. Oldacre would like to have a little bit more time for that. And so, instead of it being the earlier to occur of, the date of validation, we would just say that it would start on the commencement date, which is a defined term in the, in the agreement. And that defined term is the date on which the developer sends a notice to the city that the last of the initial project tenants is open for business. So, the, the outside date for that is December 31, 2018. So, that would be the only proposed modification to what's been presented to you guys to date.
I can only speak for myself. I, I wouldn't have an objection to that. I understand. Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minor. Is there anyone else here to speak to this matter? All right. If not, we will.
Mr. President, I just have one question on that. So, what, so how much, what kind of time extension is, is that?
Well, I think it would be...
Please, please use the microphone. Yeah.
Just in the last week, we have had some conversations with in-line retailers in the center about maybe moving some of them around. And so, initially, with the city of Homewood, it was pretty much fill in some empty boxes and add some pads in the front, like we've added Starbucks. It's, we're going to turn the Starbucks store over to Starbucks Wednesday, and they're going to start doing their interior finish work. But now, with the work of moving some people around inside the shopping center, we're talking about maybe a six-month or a 12-month extension of the start date. Not a, not much, not much more than we already have.
Right. Thank you. Again, I'm going to assume no one else to speak, so we will close this public hearing. And this is a time for comments from the council. There being none, the chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of said item.
I did have a quick question.
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Can, could someone provide an update on the cloverleaf, or the, not the cloverleaf, the?
The divergent diamond.
Divergent diamond. What's the time for, I mean, I know that's going to, going to further enhance what, what we're talking about, to get traffic to, you know, to the center and back on the interstate easier. What, what is our latest on, on, on that project?
If I'm not mistaken, councilmen, they, they were looking at 20, I want to say 19 for that. I may be wrong. But I also know that Aldott was really interested, along with the previous governor. I don't know what the administration's view is on it at this point, but it was my understanding that, that Aldott was very interested in moving that project forward by a couple of years. But at this point, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. It's an exciting project, and I just want to keep that on the front burner. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Again, your president would welcome a motion and a second.
I would move to a...
I would move to approve the agreement.
Second. Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously, and that's Resolution 1765, okay? Thank you. All right, the next item we are going to take out of order, what once was 180417 is now 260417, which is the request to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract and fund demography for...
That's still the same item number, we changed the 1804 that was under committee referral.
Okay, that's the one we left, thank you, excuse me, let me try again. 180417 is the request to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract and fund demography for Homewood Board of Education's use of bond proceeds requested by myself. Report and a motion from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, the Finance Committee met last week, but we did not have the, the recommendation from the Board of Education at that point, so we, we moved to unanimously to send it out without recommendation pending the demographic proposal delivered to us, so we now have that. So I would, I would move that we, we approve the contract with cooperative strategies for a total of $30,000, and I'm not sure what fund that is, Melody.
Well, it's out of the bond fund.
Out of the bond proceeds.
I just assumed that we're going to move it out of the bond proceeds.
Yeah, out of the bond proceeds.
Let the board pay them directly is what I thought, that we'll, that we'll have to cut the check to the Board of Education for them to pay out of the Fund 26 bond proceeds.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure of the number, yeah. But that's, that'd be my motion from the floor, Dr. Cleveland's here, I guess if there are any questions, but it was self-explanatory, and it looks like a good plan to get moving on that with cooperative strategies.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones as an individual, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCluskey. Are there any questions for Dr. Cleveland? He, again, he is here. You see, Dr. Cleveland, there are no questions, so that being the case, all in favor of Resolution 1766, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous, okay? Yes. All right, so, we will move on to 041216, request for consideration of Central Avenue parking from Mr. Brett Thames. Start with a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, the committee met last week as well, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the latest design distributed by Mr. Cobb, and then have Mr. Cobb send out RFPs for construction. That's a recommendation coming out of Finance.
Okay, so we do have a recommendation coming out of the Finance Committee. Are there any questions about this item? If there are not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And there are, that is unanimous, so that is Resolution 1767.
Now, one, one quick question.
Yes.
And Mr. Cobb was, didn't know about cost and things like that, did you want to address this real fast, in case we need...
Mr. Cobb, if you had come forward.
Any changes that we need to make?
It'll hurt your feelings a little bit.
Well, I can handle it.
Okay.
We've decided we're thick-skinned, go ahead, Mr. Cobb.
Last week when we were talking about it, I asked to get perhaps Mr. Skipper or somebody to lay that stuff out on the ground, because it's really a lot more complicated than it looks like. It looks like just go paint some lines, but there's a lot to that. Involved is drainage, when you put your bowl outs in on the corners, there's existing drainage there, but on the south end of the project headed northbound, first thing I noticed about that is that, okay, fine, all that angled parking's going to drain, just fine, but, there's always that big word, water coming from the other direction, not going to be able to get into there, so now you all of a sudden realize, now we've got an inlet issue. When I start, last week, I sat down and I spent a lot of time measuring it, trying to see if it was going to work, and I talked to Mr. Skipper, and they said, no, we don't do the layout, we can turn that over to the civil people and let them give you a working drawing, and then put it out. Okay, I understand that. So I called an engineer today to talk about that, and that's, that's a little bit more time-consuming and more expensive also, because just to do the initial survey on it and get you a schematic, to where you've got everything on paper so you know, do you have a problem or do you not, you're probably going to surpass about $10,000 just there. If you end up having to make more working drawings, you could easily double that. So it's not anywhere near as easy as it appears. And that's not some good news I was wanting to deliver, but I knew when I looked at it that it's not something I could just go out there and paint on the ground, it's not quite that simple.
But it... If I may.
Please.
But we're sending out RFPs, right, so we'll get...
I've got to have something to send. See, I haven't got, you, you can't...
Okay, so you need an appropriation to get the drawings prior to us sending out an RFP, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. The drawing I've got that Mr. Skipper made is a great drawing for an idea, but to actually, I mean, I've already got one set of prices on it to give me an idea of where I'm going in total cost-wise, but if there's somebody to actually bid the work and put it on the ground, then we'll need a little more information. Plus, it's an assurance that we don't mess up drainage or traffic or cross-slope in the road or any of those multiple things, because we are actually shifting lanes. So, you know, that's why I called Mr. Skipper in the very beginning, when you start messing around shifting lanes, anything you're doing in traffic, we want it, we want it signed off by an engineer.
Do you need to do more due diligence and then send it back to Finance to determine...
I know this is a rushed-up project, but what I really need to do is get the initial survey down and initial schematic, may find out that it's going to work and not have any more problems, may find out and won't have to dig in the well one more time, but that's kind of where we are.
All right, so Mr. Kendrick, do we need to rescind that?
No, sir. What Mr. Cobb, I think, is telling you is, he's going to have to, he anticipates getting some construction drawings...
Yes, sir.
From an engineer based on actual right-of-way, which has to be turned out, some type of survey.
Yes, sir. I sat down with it and, and did a whole lot of measuring just off paper, and I kept coming up with about five feet of earth missing, and that didn't work for me, so...
What the resident is, the minister authorizes him to simply take that design and to put it out for a proposal or bids, depending on price.
All right, good.
I think he's just informed that he can't do that until he gets the proper engineering documents.
Yes, sir. Some working drawings of some sort. I have looked at the cost on our side, and I know that we're around what I figured the night was about $48,000 just in the right-of-way, the rest is something Mr. Lewis is going to have to handle. That's not my concern, my concern is that everything in the right-of-way be done proper, so we don't have any traffic issues, we don't have any drainage issues, that's where I'm going.
No problem, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Cobb, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Kendrick. So we have, did I just, did we just approve the resolution, or...
No.
No, we haven't voted on it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we already have approved it.
That's what I thought, so it's Resolution 1767, okay? We'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir.
All right, 29, uh, welcome, Mr. White.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 290217, request for consideration to add streetlights in the Rosedale community, public safety, who'd you turn that over to? Ms. Andrews?
The committee met, and after hearing a report from Mr. Gualtney, voted four to zero to recommend approval of adding streetlights at 17th Place and Central Avenue, and referral to the Finance Committee for funding. The motion was made by Mr. Thames and seconded by myself.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Has Finance looked at this?
Yes, I think we did.
No, sir.
No, they're going, they're going to send it to Finance, it's not on the committee referral agenda, because it, because they already said that they were going to send it to Finance, so it'll go be, it'll be on the next Finance Committee.
Okay, good. All right, so thank you very much for that, and we'll move on. All right, 110417, request for consideration of fence installation slash barrier at 521 and 538 Edgelo Lane, requested by Anna and Stephen Srimph, Julie and Corey Johnson, and Andrew Wolverton, report from Public Safety, Ms. Andrews.
The committee met, and after hearing from Mr. Greg Cobb, voted for to zero to recommend installation of fence enclosing the dead-end street, and referral to the Finance Committee for funding. The motion was made by Mr. Wolverton and seconded by myself.
All right, good, so we've also referred that to Finance. 050317, request to set a public hearing for May 8th, 2017, at 6:00 PM to consider violation of driveway ordinance, Greg Cobb, BEZ Department, and we will start with a report out from special issues, do we have that?
Yes. The homeowner came to the committee meeting last Monday, and after some discussion, we, he, there had been some miscommunication between himself and the city about the width of the driveway, his misunderstanding of the, the ordinance. So we have set, we made a motion and approved a motion for to zero to set a public hearing for May 8th at 6:00 PM, and asked Mr. Lumpkin to submit a redrawn plan for a corrected driveway to the BEZ Department, and also some additional landscape plans for trees that were removed.
All right, thank you.
So we'll set that public hearing for the May 8th.
We will set that public hearing for May 8th, good, thank you. All right, 120317, public hearing carried over from April 10th, for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 2827 16th Place South, a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth in ordinance 1098 litter, Chapter 11 Health and Sanitation, Article 2 litter, Section 1142, open storage of certain items from the Code of Ordinances, Mr. Cook, we've got your information, but please share it anyway.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, since, since y'all submitted me by email, and also y'all will share the pictures that I've got up there. Basically, we got a complaint on this property back in, I guess, February, and we sent notices out and also posted the property. The homeowner has been doing some work at the front of the house, and, but not to the satisfaction, she has not done anything to the back. The city council set this public hearing, and I also sent notice to the homeowner by certified mail, as well as left her a notice on her door of tonight's meeting. As you can see in the pictures, there are some pretty good issues there. As you can see on the last picture there, I don't know what that is, part of the ordinance, excessive growth ordinance is to not have such vegetation that harbors mosquitoes, behaving for mosquitoes, and just to let you know, I give my blood for the city of Homewood. So now we're before you.
All right, so your recommendation, Mr. Cook, would be?
To declare it a public nuisance and allow the city to go in there and abate the issue.
I understand, all right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Please come forward if you would. There is not. Are there any questions of Mr. Cook while he's here? There is not, so if there's no one else, we will close this public hearing, welcome comments from the council.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames.
I had, I had heard from the homeowner a couple of weeks ago, asking for a little more time, which we granted, I think, two weeks ago. I do not know if there's, to me, there's not been much of any progress since then. I have personally helped her, or offered to help, and that offer hasn't been taken up, so, you know, at this point, I don't really see it being corrected by the homeowner. I think it's probably time we declared a nuisance, again, this won't be the first time.
I understand. All right, the chair would welcome a motion in a second for...
Move to declare a nuisance.
I'm sorry, Mr. White?
I wanted to go and declare a nuisance.
Wants to make a motion to declare a nuisance, and Mr. Gualtney seconded it, am I correct? So the vote would be all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, that's Resolution 1768. All right, 130317, public hearing carried over, again, from the same day, for consideration to set a public hearing to declare the property located at 2831 16th Street South, a public nuisance due to the violation of ordinances 1910, 1750, excessive growth ordinance in 1098 litter, and Chapter 11 Health and Sanitation, Article 2 litter, Section 1142, open storage of certain items from the Code of Ordinances, again, continuing the public hearing, Mr. Cook.
Yes, these are identical, they're two lots side by side, same owner, same notices given out, same violations, same timeframe.
Same recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? If there is not, we will then close the public hearing, and welcome any comments from the council, Mr. Thames, more of the same?
More of the same.
Okay, thank you, sir. We would welcome a motion for Mr. Cook's recommendation in a second.
Certainly.
Motion from Mr. Thames.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 1769.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. 010417, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration of variance to the sign ordinance at 124 State Farm Parkway, requested by Teresa Curry, Greg Cobb with our BEZ Department. We'll begin by opening this public hearing and turning it over to you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir, this is a simple sign, variance, McDonald's redoing their signs, and I'm sure you're going to tell us some more.
Sure.
I think there was, I stepped out during this meeting last time, but the, what the request is, is for additional signage, you're going to have four, correct?
Correct, keeping four signs, reducing the overall square footage.
And he's, he's, his size is fine, actually, Wildwood is different than the rest of the city, the rest of the city you get one attached, and Wildwood you get two, so his variance will be for two additional signs, and the square footage is fine.
So strictly the number of signs?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything to show, I wasn't here unfortunately last week...
It's up on the screen.
Oh, good, thank you.
There you go.
Let's still, I wish I did better with black and white, okay, good.
Yeah, this is the, on the right, sorry, my name's Luke, we met with access companies.
Legal vision.
I'm sorry?
I didn't understand your name.
Luke, we met with access companies.
Okay.
Engineer for McDonald's.
Speak into the mic as much as you can, because this is broadcast.
On the right-hand side of the screen is the existing restaurant, obviously with the signage, there's a Play Place sign, McDonald's, what they call the wordmark sign on the front. On the drive-through side of the building, there's also another McDonald's wordmark, and then I believe on the rear, there is another McDonald's sign. What we're proposing is on the, on the front, we're putting a Play Place sign back...
Okay.
With a wordmar, with a logo sign, so we're getting rid of the McDonald's sign and just putting a logo, as well as the new Play Place sign, which is actually smaller than And then on the rear, we're going back with another McDonald's sign, smaller than the existing, and a logo sign on the, this is the dining room side of the building, to better identify the dining room door. We typically like to have that logo sign, so people don't try and open the storage or freezer doors.
We understand. All right, are any questions about that?
I did have one question, and this isn't necessarily pertaining to the signs, but when we met last week, there was some question about the clearing that had happened on the Lakeshore side of the restaurant, and I think we asked y'all to see if y'all could look into that and see if y'all could find anything out about it.
Yeah, we actually talked to the owner, operator of the restaurant, and they weren't aware of any clearing that had happened in the last several years, and I looked at actually the drawings and the, on that side of the site, it's McDonald's owns 12 feet, and then the remaining, I believe it's about 50 or 60 feet, is actually the right-of-way, so the McDonald's...
They didn't have anything to do with it?
Hasn't done any clearing, if, if any has been done, it's more than likely the DOT or the city, I guess.
The DOT didn't do that?
They didn't.
It was clear cut, and also sprayed, it was about it this weekend, checking on it.
We sprayed the property.
City sprays.
Oh, okay.
For years.
Did you cut out a tree or something?
We cut out a tree.
It's clear cut.
So that were the trees in the were they in the right-of-way or were they in the? Okay.
All right, but it wasn't it wasn't the McDonald's, it was someone else.
Yeah, according to...
I think it was former tenants that were in Verizon.
Ah, okay.
Ah.
So.
That is an ah.
Gotcha, okay, all right, well, then, never mind, that question not directed to you.
Thank you. All right, a little bit out of order, I apologize, Special Issues report.
Well, actually, we met last week and we heard the presentation and voted four to zero to send it out tonight pending the public hearing, which is happening now.
Sure.
And then we had the question about the clearing in the right-of-way, which has nothing to do with McDonald's, so we're all good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? As the cliche goes, speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, we will close this public hearing, offer the council to make comments. No comments. Chair would welcome a motion in a second for approval of this variance.
Move to approve.
Motion for Mr. Wright, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Resolution seventeen seventy. Okay, we'll move on. Oh two oh four seventeen, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way adjacent to fifteen oh four to fifteen oh eight, Melrose Place from Robert Dawson, Greg Cobb, the B.E.Z. Department, report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
The committee met last week, voted four to zero to send this item out without a recommendation. Mr. Higginbotham made the motion and Mr. Gualtney seconded, and again, that was voted four to zero to send out without recommendation. And I think we all needed a little more clarification as to what was going to be done.
Can you help us with that, Mr. Cobb?
I'm going to. I brought you all some tax maps to show you where it is and a couple of photographs. And right now, it's it's nothing but woods, like it's never been touched by anything in fifty years. It's got an open ditch in it, and it's basically a mosquito farm at current it's current. I'm going to give you a couple of pictures to pass around. And I said, set here for Andrew. That's everything. All right, now, the tax maps, I first did the small one, the little line is the alley, but they go together like this. The three houses, I've got his house, two neighbors who want to, there's enough to go around and pass those near each direction. Is to allow rear access to the homes of Mr. Dawson and two neighbors who don't currently have it, which will get some cars off the street and into garages or whatnot. I don't see any negative effect on the surrounding neighbors. The one on Laurel Place uses it like a driveway, but they pull off of it so they won't be blocked in. I've looked at this alley for years, as a matter of fact, it was in front of the council probably five years ago by Frank Craig on the going the opposite direction. But I think Ms. Smith, no, I didn't go up there, you all went through Heather years ago.
Probably did.
It was Heather, sure.
Because she lived on Melrose.
Right, just across the road from it.
Okay.
But right now, it's nothing but just unclaimed woods. And we talked about what needs to be done, he's going to have to add some drainage pipe and put a roadbed back there, take out some trees, nothing of any significance. You can tell by that picture, it's a lot of undergrowth and few nothing exciting.
This will be at the expense of the homeowner?
Yes, sir, and I imagine him and his neighbors are going to work out how they're going to share it. Do you want to volunteer?
No. No, that's that's not a volunteering, and besides, you don't need a sixty-four-year-old doing it anyway, but that's okay.
Anyway, that's all there is to it.
All right, any other questions by any council members about this particular item? Do you feel like you have a degree of clarity now?
It does make more sense, yes.
Hey, Rick, can we make sure that whoever the house or that they would be maintaining that once it's disturbed and...
That's a great question.
Because if somebody moved, he moved, or somebody, I'm all for it, because this one's skeet bed, but we need to make sure we protect the city moving forward on the property, that whoever would have it would maintain it to the degree at which they they get it or not, and it's going to be deferred back to us and where I have to do it.
It's it's got a little bit of slope to it, so it's going to have to have some type of hard surface so that it won't wash. And we met out there today, prior to this meeting, and looked at it, picked rocks, and we've got ways to go yet. But he's also got to get some cost estimates and see if the neighbors are willing to forego that cost to maintain the drainage and everything. So we're just in the early giving permission stages, he may change his mind and decide to go somewhere else.
No, it's it's a fair statement, Mr. Gualtney, so I agree.
I can tell you that it would look better going forward than it does now.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I assume you're Mr. Dawson, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just speak into the microphone, please, if you will. Any other questions of Mr. Dawson?
Kendrick.
Mr. Kendrick, please.
The permit requires that to make improvements authorized by the planning of the zone of the park, so Greg has to make sure that the works are in accordance with our special needs.
And he will do that?
Yes, he will.
All right, anyone else who wants to speak to this, since we've got Mr. Dawson here? All right, the Chair would welcome a motion in a second for approval?
I would move pending signing of all the appropriate indemnification agreements and also a note to include that the maintenance would be at the expense of the homeowner.
I understand. So we have a motion by Ms. Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright.
And just a point of clarification, and I'm all about passing it on to whoever is living there, but can we even do that? I mean...
We would have to have all three of them sign the decision for this permit. Yes, sir, I think we could.
Attach us to the property?
The current resolution doesn't do that because it wasn't anticipated by me, but certainly we can, it would need to be signed to all three of the landowner property owners and be binding on them.
That will be...
Currently, it was just on the property owner based on...
The request.
I didn't include the message.
Well, we will let Mr. Kendrick make that modification.
Great, great, great. All right, thank you.
All right, resolution seventeen seventy-one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved, thank you very much. Oh three oh four seventeen, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to enter into our contract with Sprint Solutions, Inc. for communication services, requested by James Yates of our I.T. Department. Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, the committee voted five to zero to recommend authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Sprint Solutions.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Are there any questions or comments? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution seventeen seventy-two. Again, we'll point out oh five oh four seventeen that that public hearing, due to time requirements by law, has been changed from April twenty-fourth to May eighth, twenty seventeen, and I will make said acknowledgement of that. Oh eight oh four seventeen, request to consider amendments to Level Three franchise agreement, requested by our city attorney, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, again, we voted five to zero to recommend approval. It's a ten-year agreement with the same terms and conditions as the previous five-year agreement, so five to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance, or a report from Finance. What we need is a motion in a second for unanimous consent.
Well, I tried it, it's an ordinance, isn't it?
Yes.
I would move for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCluskey. If you can do the roll call, Ms. Salter.
Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes, so for ordinance twenty-six fifty-four, the Chair would welcome a motion in a second for adoption.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Thames, second from second from Mr. Jones? I'm sorry, Mr. Wright, excuse me. The hearing is...
Mr. Lumpkin, would you like me to read this right quick?
That would be a good thing, yes, sir.
Whereas the city's previously adopted ordinance twenty-fifty-one and powered the power optical communication franchise on the date of March, kind of franchise to American Communicating Services in Birmingham, leased by a company which is attached, Level Three, telecom, all of Alabama, limited all of other companies previously acquired the franchise, whereas Level Two is requested the city will renew its tender franchise for a period of ten years. As now, the O.V.A. by the city council to adopt this, we amend the current franchise to a period of ten years from present time.
Thank you, sir. All right, roll call, Ms. Salter.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes. Twenty-six fifty-four passed unanimously. We move on to twelve oh four seventeen, request for consideration for municipal right-of-way permit, indemnification agreement, or new retaining wall at twenty-eight-hundred Monasory Way, requested by Greg Smith, Creative Montessori of Vanessa McGrath, report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee voted, I mean, met last Monday and voted four to zero to send this out without a recommendation, and just for a point of clarification, the wall itself is not being built in the right-of-way, but the Montessori School needs access to the right-of-way to build the wall, so wall not in the right-of-way. Four to zero coming out of Special Issues.
Ms. McGrath?
I have the drawings that I brought last time, if you guys would like to see them again. The wall is just on the northeast corner of the property, basically from where the the school building ends to where the new building is, where that yellow line is. And it's just going to be a modular geostone wall. And like I said, all the all the wall and all aspects of the wall will be within their property, they just need on our property to be able to build it.
Good. I'd say to Ms. Smith?
No.
Yes. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Greg Smith, Director of Creative Montessori School.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, therefore, the Chair would welcome a motion for approval. So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr. Thames. Any further questions or discussion?
Oh, excuse me. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution seventeen seventy-three. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, no problem. Move on to the committee referral agenda, Chair would welcome a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Ms. Smith. Any further comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the committee referral agenda is approved. All right, twenty-two oh four seventeen, request to authorize one voting delegate of the City of Homewood Council to vote at the Alabama League of Municipalities Annual Convention, May twentieth to twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, in Birmingham, requested by Melody Salter, our city clerk, and myself. Walter Jones has graciously volunteered to be that delegate, and the Chair would welcome a motion in a second for approving him.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Andres, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, then that is resolution seventeen seventy-four.
We need a sash.
And thank you, Mr. Jones, for your service.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay. Twenty-three oh four seventeen, request to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a reassigned agreement between the City of Homewood and Alcom Radio to reassign the American Tower lease to Alcom. Requested by Chief Bresnan. The council, the Chair would welcome a motion in a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Jones. Any discussion, there being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution seventeen seventy-five. Finally, we come to twenty-four oh four seventeen, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of April tenth, twenty-seventeen, through April twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, and we will turn this over to you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, reviewed the vouchers, everything had a few questions, but everything was answered, so I would approve, I'd like to move for the approval of the vouchers for April tenth through the twenty-third.
Mr. Jones, can I ask a question? I just remember I asked you about a late ad, but I scanned it to myself, I forgot to send it to you for some hoes, is it okay to add that, or do you need to wait to see?
You can add that, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCluskey. Any further discussion, there being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution seventeen seventy-six. And at this point, Mayor, we'll turn it over to you.
I'm in the aye.
Goodness. Okay, and we'll start with, before we start with Ward One, I do want to save about thirty minutes at five-thirty next Monday for the two Ward Two reps, so we'll fill you in a little more on that later. But as we start putting the committee meetings together, I think you guys may need about half an hour on this, so with that...
About the country next next week.
Uh-oh. Mr. Kendrick? Mr. Wolverton's not going to be available for that meeting with...
That's not...
Okay, we'll work it out. Mr. Gualtney?
I just wanted to recognize our the director of our library, Debbie Fout. She recently received the eminent librarian award from the Alabama Library Association. In addition to that, she the library received a recertification of its gold standard this year, so that's a excellent thing for our library, and it speaks well of the job she's doing and her staff over there, so I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware.
All right, thank you. We'll we'll make sure the next time we see her that we'll let her know. Mr. Thames?
Had a great time at Homewood Grove, saw a lot of folks there, it's a fantastic event, and we have the Edgewood Festival this Saturday. If I need to buy some baked goods, or I will not be in the donkey booth this year, so you're going to miss that, but it'll be this Saturday, and it's a lot of fun. Ms. Smith, you said you wanted five o'clock?
If I could get it, yes, please.
And how long do you need?
Since they're not doing the five-thirty thing, Volatiles is going to be here, let me just say till five forty-five, just to be safe.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I can probably, we can probably do it in five-thirty. I don't think I have a lot of...
Be sure about that, come on, man.
I know, I know, I was trying to, I was trying to make sure...
Five forty-five is fine.
Okay. I was being realistic. I was being realistic.
And so there is not another, we're good to go from there, Mr. Lumpkin?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll do plan development at five forty-five, and that's it?
How much time do you need?
I think fifteen minutes would be fine.
Okay, good, thank you, Mr. Thames. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the only thing I would comment on is I did get an opportunity today, based on my service on this council, but not in the city limits of Homewood, I was asked to go to the J.C. C.E.O. pre-K center that was in Sherman Heights in Birmingham, Alabama, and read to some kids for the Week of the Young Child, and that was kind of a convoluted story, well, not that convoluted a story, many of you may know Mr. Lovey Crawford, who works at Homewood Middle School, it's our career tech, he his wife works there, and I knew Mr. Crawford back from my my neighborhood days, back when I was in Birmingham, so neighborhood days, back when I was in Birmingham, so she asked if I'd come out and read, and I got to read, If You Give a Moose a Muffin, and Where the Wild Things Are, and sing the ABC song a couple of times, and just had a whole lot of fun with those three-year-olds, and was very appreciative of the opportunity, actually, to see the little kids and spend some time with them, so I did want to note that and thank JCCO for hosting me today.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Wolverton?
I don't really have anything other than, don't let your one-year-old give you a lethal blow to the eye, because it's incapacitated me today.
I'm, I'm so sorry for that.
That's all right.
Mr. McCluskey?
Brett, did you say you only need 15?
Yes, so you get six.
I'll do 6 o'clock for public safety, and I probably only need 15 minutes as well, and that's it for tonight.
All right, good. 6 to 6:15 for public safety. Mr. Jones?
Chief, you better get out of here. We have a show choir concert right now that we need to go to, so his daughter's, I think, singing a solo tonight, so. Finance would be at, what, 6:40?
6:15.
Okay, so, 6:15?
Yeah.
How long do you need?
We need about 45 minutes.
We have Jason in the midyear review.
Yeah, we, we need 45 minutes.
Okay, 6:15 to 7 is yours.
Yeah, and I want to thank Nancy Farron for her service to our ward for the last five years, we appreciate it, and we look for the future, but I just want to thank her for her service and being very gracious of serving on the Board of Education. Nothing further.
You go ahead. Ms. Smith?
I've already set special issues for 5, thank y'all for that, and I would say, in honor of Vance Moody, I'm going to be the football updater, now that I have a kid who's going to be a senior football player. Spring football practice started today, and so we are back in the throes of football, so I'm going to keep y'all updated, that's going to be my, my goal for the fall.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Wright?
First, I apologize for being late, but secondly, I wanted to recognize Aiden Cockrell.